Okay, I will call the meeting, the regular meeting of the Everman City Council to order. It is Tuesday, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, and the time is six oh one. Everybody please rise for a moment of silence before I pledge allegiance. Okay, so first item on the agenda is consent agenda. Item A is minutes from the March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting. I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve the minutes as read.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Should poll the council.
Place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three. Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item, item B, financials for March twenty twenty-five. I'll entertain a motion to approve or to accept.
I move we accept the financials for March twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-five as discussed. I second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Should poll the council.
Place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three. Place four.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item is Susan's comments. Come on up.
Oh, hold on. You're part of the P and Z case though, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so he is the applicant on a zoning change. So, your comments, I'm assuming, are in relation to the zoning change, zoning case?
Yeah.
Okay, do you want to hang on just a second? And we'll, uh, we'll get into the zoning case, and then we'll bring you up for that. It's, it's next on the agenda, so it'll take just a second.
Okay, so next item, item seven, deliberation and determination on cases. Item A, zoning case. Item A, let's see. The council will conduct a public hearing on case number four-six, correction, four-three-six-zero, or request for zoning change from A-two single-family residential to M-one multifamily for the property located at two-hundred West Enon Avenue. The time is six oh five, and we'll open the public hearing.
All right. So, we're gonna give a staff report first, just so everybody's aware. And then we'll, after the staff presentation, we'll allow the applicant to come up and speak for three minutes. If there's anybody here who wants to speak in opposition of that, they'll be allowed time to speak. I believe it's two minutes per person. And then following that, if the applicant would like to make a rebuttal, he'll have two minutes to make a rebuttal, before then you can deliberate on the case. So, let me pull up our presentation here. Um, Eliza, can you share my screen? I'm gonna switch mics, because this one's not. Just so I'm going on the record here. All right, so case number four-three-six-zero is two-hundred West Enon Avenue. The request is from A-two single-family to M-one two-family residential. It is a duplex. The petitioner is Mr. George Sandoval, who is here tonight. Uh, the future land use plan identifies this as a single-family residential, which is compatible but not necessarily consistent, um, recommendation. But it, it says denial. Uh, we'll tell you, just like we told the, the Planning and Zoning Commission, we could really go either way with this. The reason why staff recommendation is denial is solely because of, um, the concern of the precedent it would set, and fear of any other A-two single families wanting to convert to duplexes. Um, that's, that's kind of the, the justification behind the denial. However, this really could go either way, and, and I don't think staff or legal have any, we're not gonna have any heartburn over it, just, just to be very blunt with you. Um, the P and Z recommendation, after hearing the case and hearing the same facts that we're presenting to you tonight, did put forth a recommendation for denial. Um, it was a unanimous vote for denial. So now it has to come to you. Just to share a map with you, this property is located right at the corner of Cunningham and Enon Avenue. It is currently zoned A-two residential. Here's an aerial shot of the property at that intersection. View from Enon looking north. A view from Enon and Cunningham looking towards the property. One of the things that's been concerning here is that, um, there's obviously an error within TAD. I know that's not gonna shock any of you. But TAD reflects this to be zoned as multifamily. We have no records indicating such whatsoever. There's no ordinances ever passed, anything related to this property. This property has operated as a duplex for many, many years. Um, you can see, if you, if you look kind of close on the picture, let me see if I can zoom in here, there are two front doors. Um, the property is currently, oop, I did not mean to zoom out that much. Let me try to get back to where I was. There we go. The prior, this property through a purchase, six months ago?
Year.
A year ago, okay. Uh, about a year ago, and has been working to fix up the property, uh, to make it an investment property. Um, he was working on it, uh, at the time when it became discovered by staff that there were no permits, and that it was not zoned for multifamily, which he has then initiated the process of trying to get it zoned appropriately, so he can keep his investment property. So with that, Mr. Sandoval, you wanna come on up and plead your case to the council?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's George Sandoval. Uh, I've owned the property for about a year now, and since cleaned it up, tried to straighten up the fence, and you know, little things here and there that we try to do to make it look a lot better. Uh, I do wanna address the two concerns for the traffic and the spot zoning. I feel like the traffic, it's something that we can address with, uh, like a real strict lease agreement. I am an investor, not a huge investor. I'm not gonna rent it and just collect. That's not what I plan on doing. I plan on being there, making sure it's mowed, making sure, you know, they don't park ten cars on the side of the road. You know, it's a two-bedroom apartment in the back that I'm trying to get light to, powered to, and I just, I'll keep it up. I'd keep up with it, you know? It's not in my interest to let it get run down, or none of that, 'cause then it wouldn't be a good investment property. And then as far as the spot zoning, um, I understand the concern. I just feel like we're not in the middle of a residential neighborhood, where it's, like, everything around me is residential. Uh, I feel like we're in a good area, 'cause everything around me is either commercial, light industrial. Um, we have a, the historic museum that's probably going up here in a few years, or next year or something. I've seen some construction out there, so that's why I'm saying that. I thought maybe y'all are gonna start working on it or something. Yeah, so the spot zoning, that's just, you know, to me, if I'm in the middle of a residential neighborhood, and I'm surrounded within a thousand feet of nothing but resi- A-one single-family homes, I understand, but I just feel like I'm on, right on the outskirts of being commercial, light industrial, all that good stuff. So, I just wanted to make my point on that, and that's all I got for you.
Do you guys have any questions?
Uh, yes, my question is regarding the public hearing. Was this supposed to be announced or something?
Yes ma'am, it's a, all public hearings are posted, uh, with a requirement, posted in newspaper circulation, uh, notices are sent out. Uh, I think the requirement is a hundred, is it a two-hundred feet? We go a hundred feet beyond that, just out of principle, to make sure we don't miss anybody and wind up in any legal issues. So we go three-hundred feet, so notices were sent out to all, uh, addresses within three-hundred feet of the location change as well.
Well, first of all, Mr. Sandoval, I, I understand your situation, but at the same time, I do agree with staff that it is spot zoning, and that could open up some, a bad precedence on our end. We've got some other areas where they're trying to do something similar that we're having to take action against. Are they two completely separate units?
No, it's all connected. I do have-
I mean, is there a doorway or something connecting both sides of the unit, or?
So, the way it's set up, the front of it is a, like a two-bedroom, I'd say apartment, really. Two-bedroom, living room, kitchen, and then there's a garage in the middle, another garage next to it, and then that's where the back starts. I do have a picture, if you wanna have, get an idea of that.
Yeah, the Google Earth image is a little deceiving. You see the two, two doors on the front, and the outside. Um, those are, those, both those doors actually go into one unit. Um, the other unit is, is on the opposite, on the backside of the property, so-
So it's back behind all the, the brush and stuff?
Yeah, and currently the brush is removed. He has done a substantial amount of up, of upgrades and clean out both of the properties, so it does look a lot better now.
If you wanna share pictures, you can. If you, if you wanna step up here, you can share those if you'd like.
I got a couple of pictures of, of, of the cleanup.
Go ahead, start down there, and we'll just pass them around.
So how many bedrooms does, would each of these have?
Currently, the front has two bedrooms, and the backside has two bedrooms also.
Okay.
So there's no way to put in a doorway and utilize it as one large unit? With the garages?
If, maybe if I put a door in the garage. But what separates both units is, is the two garages in the middle. That's what separates both the units. And, I mean, it's, we bought it, it's set up for two, two electric meters. There was a second meter on there at one time.
Any idea how old? I mean, I assume there was some, it was constructed and added to it at a later date.
I have a tenant that's been there, we bought it, and he stayed, he's been there twenty-five years, and he said it's been like that for twenty-five years.
So, um, Donna was able to, she was, she, she searched as far back as she could with, between county records and city records. Um, and every record that we have been able to find has been a single owner, a single-family residence. Um, the, as, uh, Mr. Sandoval explained during the hearing, the property was inhabited by a, a father and a, a son, correct?
Was a guy in the front, he lived there?
They were family though, correct?
Yeah, I think it was more as, like, the dad passed it down to his son, and then he just moved into the back. I think it was something like that.
So it wasn't necessarily utilized as a leasee with a management company-type scenario. It was more of a family, uh, type, separate, Jack and Jill-style residence. Um, and just to, for clarification's sake, he, he brought up the, the spot zoning. Um, after consult with our, with our legal, we're not so much concerned of it, uh, being considered as a spot zone issue, uh, more of a transitional zoning issue. So if you refer to our zoning map, uh, the surrounding is actually, we do have a few parcels that are zoned commercial, um, but most of it is still single-family, and then institutional with the, with the school. So all of the adjacent properties that are across the street and to the north, those are still zoned as a single-family, um, with the exception of one on the corner. Um, so the, our fear that brings the concern to us is that it would become a transitional zone, allowing for, if a developer came in and they wanted to buy the parcels across the street or just to the north, and allowing that as, well, now we have, uh, we permitted a, a duplex here, could this now branch into a, a multifamily or, uh, apartment community style, you know, duplex or condominium? Uh, because generally speaking, you don't have a single-family adjacent to a multifamily, but a duplex transitional zone could provide that pathway. That's where our concern comes into play.
Is your tenant gonna be allowed to stay there?
Yes, uh, we bought it about a year ago, and we never kicked him out or none of that. Yeah, we kept him there. He's a, I mean, he's perfect for what you want as a tenant.
So that area there, those are all single-family residential houses along, uh, Enon?
Yes, along Enon, so the green indicates community facility, that is the school, Hummel Elementary-owned property. Um, the, uh, kind of light orange, I guess, or beige is, uh, all A-two residential. Uh, the purple is general commercial, and then the gray is light industrial.
And we do have some, like duplex-type units just east of there, correct?
Yes.
Okay, my, my concern is, I don't know, um, how many of y'all remember this, but several years ago, we had, our city map was blocked, and we had all kinds of spot zoning everywhere. And we worked for quite a while to, to straighten it up. Um, and I, I'm concerned that this would lend itself to what Chief was just talking about. Um, we've already now, we've broken ground, so to speak, to an A-two. Well then, just the work of that, if the property opens up, uh, what's to prevent somebody from coming in and wanting to put up a multi-story whatever, when all of these people around there, really, except for the light industrial, um, all of these people are, they're single-family homes. My, my concern is the spot zoning. I just don't want to see that breach, uh, lend itself to other zoning requests. And also the traffic. Enon is heavily trafficked. We've got a thousand homes going up, and traffic is going to continue to grow on Enon. Uh, I'm just concerned that, because I only see one driveway there, which is. And, um, so you've got a duplex, a garage, and the other half of it, and I see one driveway, and if you've got two drivers in each side, that's four cars, that driveway's not gonna hold.
Yes ma'am. Uh, we also do, we have a little bit of a side yard also, that we could potentially turn into more parking for it. Uh, so I think the traffic part, I think, I don't think I'll impact the area as bad.
Okay, well, I grew up here, and I have seen the traffic-
Oh, I know.
-literally explode.
Yes ma'am.
And, uh, all those houses that are going up back behind Baxter Elementary, Junior High, and the other populated places. Enon is the throat.
Yes ma'am, I've, I've lived in Hamlet for twenty years now.
Okay.
Yeah, so. I feel like I'm from Everman, 'cause there, when everybody, yeah, everybody asks, I live in Everman.
So anyway, that's, that's my thinking on it.
Well, I'm gonna bring our attorney in on this. Uh, what kind of can of worms are we opening? If we were to allow this.
Well, legally, can you put the zoning map back up? Somebody, there we go, yeah. Okay, so this property's where the goal star is, and, and I think Chief really, um, well, uh, explained the legal risk. The legal risk, of course, is that if you allow this one to go in as a duplex, the property to the north, and, and even, you know, a re-vamping of the property over to the, uh, east, that they would have a very good argument for being in that same quote transition zone, you know, to go to multifamily. Um, so that's, that's really the, the risk. It, that's what, I don't want, I don't wanna call it a risk, or say that that's bad. It's not necessarily that the multifamily would be bad, but that is what you would be looking at, that you could anticipate that those property owners would come in and say, you know, we see this as a transition area, clearly you saw it that way too, we'd like to now make this a transition from, from residential to commercial and industrial by, by going multifamily here. So, so that's, that's the, uh, most likely scenario from, from the green board. But as far as calling it spot zoning, uh, it is not an egregious case of spot zoning. It is still a residential use, it is a duplex, uh, it's in a residential, uh, area. It, spot zoning would be if you were gonna put a light industrial or a heavy industrial where that goal star is, that would definitely be spot zoning.
I, I, I guess my curiosity is, uh, would we still have teeth if somebody else came in, due to the fact that it's been a duplex for so long? Is it not grandfathered in? Well, it's, it's never been approved as far as we know, so-
To be grandfathered, it has to have been legal when the use started. And so, uh, it, unless there is some evidence that it was actually zoned for duplex, then it is just an illegal use all these years, and that doesn't qualify as grandfathering.
And as far as our research can confirm, throughout all the history that is, is known, it, it has been that zoning. Um, and we have not had a, a separate water account for the property either, um, to, um, to, I'll agree with, with Mr. Sandoval, that there has been, uh, an established Encore, um, utilities, but that, as, as you know, that does not go through the city. Um, and only as of the last, uh, five, six years, have they been very diligent about confirming with the city requiring a release before there were at least a meter or in place one. Um, prior to that, we didn't necessarily have a say.
It is a weird case, 'cause it did have its own address at one time, too. I have records of it from the post office. It was one-oh-three North Cunningham, I believe, at one time also.
Two separate addresses?
At, at one time it did, so everybody's confused. We don't, they don't know, we don't know how that happened.
Historically, that's not uncommon, because again, you're talking about entities that didn't necessarily communicate with each other historically. Um, so it would not be uncommon for the Postal Service to have separate addressing that doesn't align with the city. Um, same thing in nine-one-one and, and, and everything else. Now, systems are all communicating, we all work together, that, that's been resolved, very similar to how the Encore system works. It did at one point have its own add, uh, two separate addresses. One was one-oh-three, uh, North Cunningham, the other one two-hundred West Enon Avenue, according to the Postal Service. However, the property is platted as one location within TAD, and the address of two-hundred West Enon Avenue.
Do we have any other questions or comments?
What is, uh, on the second page, um, what is the two-thousand-dollar penalty for? Oh, I'm sorry, that's on page.
I'm sorry ma'am, on which page, on where are you at?
Um, that's on, it's on page.
It's item B.
Oh, oh, okay, okay, I got you.
Can you hold up on that?
Okay.
Okay, uh, if we don't have any other questions or comments, then I will close the public hearing. Time is six-twenty-five.
Per, you can have your lights. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's, I see. So item B is attached to this one. Okay. So item B, consider and take action on an ordinance amending the comprehensive zoning ordinance and map of the city of Everman, Texas, for a parcel designated as Lot thirteen, Block seven, in the town of Everman, Tarrant County, Texas. According to the plat, recorded in volume one-oh-six, page one-twenty-six, deed records of Tarrant County, and being more commonly known as two-hundred West Enon Avenue in the city of Everman, from A-two single-family residential to M-one two-family residential duplex, uh, providing a savings clause, providing a penalty of fine not to exceed the sum of two-thousand dollars for each offense, and providing an effective date. So I will entertain a motion.
I don't know how to warn you. I vote no, but I don't know how to warn you.
We prefer that we make a motion in the affirmative to approve, even if you're not gonna prove that.
Oh, okay, okay, that's what I'm saying. I, I, okay, so I'm gonna make a motion, but I don't really mean it. Okay.
Well, you can't so long.
I'm kidding, you wiped it off, I'm sorry. Um, oh, thank you. Um, I move that we approve the ordinance amending the comprehensive zoning ordinance and map of the city of Everman, Texas, as read. Okay. I second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes, I was asked, so what is the penalty of the two-thousand dollars for?
So this ordinance would essentially approve the zoning change from A-two single-family to M-one multifamily. Any use outside of what is allowed within, in one multifamily, would result in a penalty of up to two-thousand dollars per day per violation. Meaning if they were, been heavy industrial and-
Start.
We have two-thousand dollars per day. That is, that's standard. Sorry, did I jump again?
No, I, I was gonna add that it's up to two-thousand dollars, and it's, so it's two-thousand dollars if it affects the public health and safety, uh, otherwise it's probably lesser.
Any other questions or comments?
Probably just for clarification, an "I" vote is to approve zoning change, and no vote is to move, vote down this motion, just so you guys are clear. Y'all have any questions for staff?
No.
Okay.
Would you poll the council?
Place one?
No.
Place two?
No.
Place three?
Yes.
Place four?
No.
No.
Place five?
No.
Place six?
Abstain.
Can you carry her say?
No.
And would you have a contest?
No.
Mayor?
Uh, no.
Motion found.
Do they have to, do they have to hear another motion? Or did it not happen? So, we'll get with, we'll get staff with you afterwards. This isn't your last opportunity. If you'd like to reapply at a later date, staff can work with you to see if there's another, another means for, to help you, help get your goal, but they're just not gonna approve it.
Well, Mr. Sandoval, too, if you can do some digging, if you can find something that shows that in the records that that was a duplex? that in the records that that was a duplex, then, yeah, legal document.
Well.
Yeah, legal duplex.
It's TAD, and they go back ten years of multifamily. When I bought it, I looked it up in TAD, and everything said multifamily on it.
He's referencing the, the, the building classification, so.
All right, thank you. Next item, item eight is discussion items. Item A, interlocal agreement between the City of Everman and the Everman Community Development Corporation for personnel sharing and cost allocation.
All right, so, wanted to brief you on this. I hope three of you serve the CDC, so this'll be anything new for you. But Suzanne and I have both been essentially nominated by the CDC subsequent to your approval, of course, or subject to your approval, to serve as co-executive directors for the CDC. As we were working on that, there has never really been an interlocal agreement between the CDC and the city council regarding the exchanging of funds and who's responsible for what. Both parties have always kind of independently approved the budget, which has included administrative transfer costs. So it's not that anything has happened that either party's not aware of, but we really need to have it formalized into a document, an interlocal agreement. So Victoria has drafted one up for, for you to review. I wanted to give this to you with the opportunity for you to review it, ask any questions. The reason why we don't have it on for consideration in action tonight is I think it's probably best, now that we have a document, to take this back to CDC first and have them review and, and provide their approval before we bring it back to you, because they're the ones that are committing the funding, to the funding piece of it. And then you would just have to kind of accept or reject it. But I felt that that was probably gonna be more appropriate, was to have them approve it on their side first, before coming back to you. So we have this for you. You can take your time to review it. I'm happy to answer any questions for you tonight, if you have any. CDC would approve it first, and then we would bring it back to you. In the interim, you do have an action item tonight, a resolution that approves us as serving in that role and, and as interim until this agreement's finalized.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to look at it.
You're welcome. Okay, so next item is monthly staff reports. Item one, fire department.
That's just rude. I'm not, not first usually. Mayor, council, good evening. Each of you have a hand out in front of you. So this is my staff report for March 25th to the present. During that time period, we had a total of 131 calls for service. And average response time for all calls, including county jurisdictions, was five seconds. To en route, or better known as our shoot times, dispatched to 19. Keeping in mind that there is not always the most accurate timing. We're, we're working on getting the Cads in the vehicles so that way they can keep track of their own times, because sometimes the dispatcher's overloaded, and so it may take them a few seconds to actually click where the vehicles en route. For the total in-city overlapping emergency incidents for this time period was a total of 22 times, with 17% of all calls. So, just to clarify that, I mean, 17% of the time, we're working two or more emergency incidents at the same time. So either requiring or giving mutually. The incidents by response type is our fire-type incidents. The, the building, vehicle, grass, et cetera, is 14. The one worth mentioning is, including the one structural fire within our county jurisdiction that brought Brandon, Kennedale, Fort Worth, Edgcliffe, Forest Hill, and Benbrook to respond. That fire challenged me. I'll be the first to admit that one. I've yet to see a fire actually go out before our eyes and then restart three times. So that one, we were out there for about seven hours. Medical emergencies were a total of 92. Motor vehicle accidents, a total of nine. Hazardous conditions was 10, and other were six. Staffing, I'll just leave it with, we are interviewing applicants to create a candidate eligibility list. We, we have applicants, and so we're gonna go ahead and make them, make a list, and that way they're ready to hire whenever we have vacancies. The Fire Marshal's Office, I added that one on here for this month. We're currently reviewing and permitting multiple large construction projects with the Everman ISD on three separate campuses. I believe there's upwards of $36 million in projects that they're, that we're reviewing and permitting. So there's gonna be a lot of great improvements to the, the ISD buildings. And then met with the contractors for 100 North Forest Hill Drive, because I know everybody's curious about the restaurant and when it's gonna open up. There was a revamp on the, the floor plan. He wanted to improve it, and then improve operations within the kitchen. It didn't require a new plan review, because there was no structural changes or changes within the MEP, their electrical or plumbing. So it was merely cosmetic, but it does assist the overall floor, floor plan flow of the, of the restaurant. So they're in the middle of that upgrade. So I was told, hopefully, they'll be complete with the changes by the end of the month, and then we'll proceed to granting the CO. But all of the, the vital inspections have already been completed, so as soon as they're thumbs up, then we're good. And that's it? Any questions? Oh, wait, sorry, ISO review meeting, that's the big one. We had our meeting with the ISO inspector on April 2nd. It went extremely well. He walked in and vividly remembered what he walked into the last time in 2016, and it was a stark difference. So he was overwhelmed with giving us kudos on, on the improvements to the operations, just off face value. So we're completing the documentation as we speak, and I, I told him I was gonna get to him as fast as possible so he can get us our response back as quick as possible. But we do expect a substantial increase on our scoring. So that will, to be seen.
And just to, just to add to that, if you don't understand what that means, lower the ISO rating, the more homeowners and property owners get to save on their insurance. So there's actually a direct savings to our property owners here by having a lower ISO rating. So that's really, really good news, not just for the city, but for all of our residents and business owners.
If, if we can go from what we're currently at a four, the goal is to get us to a two. That, like I said, goal. But for sure, I think we've, we've exceeded the, the needs that would get us to a three, but our goal is to get us to a two. And to put in perspective, that change would reduce your, your insurance premiums from anywhere between 5% and 15% for residential, and up to 20% for a commercial development. So it's a substantial savings.
That's great.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Still trying to get used to that. I've given you each a, a brief summary of, of what the activity was from our last meeting on March 25th. Between March 26th and today at about 4:30 PM, our officers had been dispatched to 1,478 calls for service. And that involved these and, and other categories as well, but we responded to 13 traffic crashes. Five of them were major, involving injuries. Three were, uh, three were hit and runs. And then we had five minors that, I had a young boy call and report one of those years ago, and he called it a bump-in tube wreck. So nobody hurt, just a little property damage. We had 45 disturbance calls, which seems like a lot. It's really not that far out of range as what our average is. General disturbance calls, we had three domestic disturbances. One of those did end up resulting in an arrest. We had four assault calls. All of them were simple assaults, minor contact. Three burglary in progress calls. One of those was unfounded. One of them turned out to be a neighbor dispute. They were just mad at each other. And the other one actually resulted in two arrests. They were still in the building when we got there. We had two burglary investigations. Both of them were unfounded. Was not a burglary. We had 11 suspicious person or vehicle calls. Three fight calls, seven thefts. Seven, uh, seven calls involving mentally ill persons. Six parking violations. We had one person with a gun call. He was taken into custody. He was detained. He was a juvenile. So that's never a settling thing. We had two reckless drivers, four threats. We had runaway, one runaway. And runaway was located and returned to the parent. We had a total of nine arrests for the month. 14 alarms. Thirteen of them were business alarms. We had only one residential alarm. And we were called to assist other agencies, outside agencies, nine times. That's, recently, we've been going to Forest Hill quite a bit because of their activity. This last month, we were covering the sheriff's office more. They, they were our primary user. We responded Kennedale, Forest Hill, and we assisted Fort Worth PD on several calls. Traffic enforcement activities resulted in a total of 48 citations and 29 warnings. Like, this afternoon, I called Assistant Chief Thompson, and I said, "Remind me, if I'm missing anything noteworthy that happened in the past 30 days?" Because nothing's really standing out other than this, this activity. We thought about it for a minute, and he said, "You mean other than us being promoted?" So, yeah, besides that. Oh, that's, that's a, a brief rundown of, of what our activity has been. Nothing out of the ordinary. It's holding pretty much on the average. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, item C is Public Works Department.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You hear me good this time? So, just a summary for this month. On the Water Department, we had one service line collapsed repair. So that's a sewer line that was completely gone. So our guys had to go in there and redo the sewer line. So that was a pretty good job there to do. We have two main breaks that happened, three service line repairs that the guys had to fix. And then we had the TCQ inspection last week. We already got the results back. There's a couple things we, we need to work on and we're gonna fix. Nothing major, just small little things, so that's a good thing. Paperwork's great. They liked the sites. They, they really went out there and looked at them. So we got some, some good kudos on that, too, so we're keeping up with that. So that's the Utility Department. On the Parks and Streets, as you see there in the pictures, we started to work on our project there in Johnson Park. We done quite a bit of work there. We installed the borderlines around the playground, just like we did here on Pittman Park. We installed the new swings, installed two new spring rides with the concrete base, like is recommended. And we repainted the jungle gym, which was in pretty bad shape. And we painted the swing set red. And as you see there in the pictures, it's, it's a big, big change from what it was. So I'm sure the, the families and the kids are gonna be able to enjoy it now a little bit more. And also, on top of that, we also were able to accomplish to do 21 potholes while we were also doing this project. So our guys have been busy this past month.
Do you wanna talk about the, share with them the crack fill machine that we were able to acquire from the county?
Yes. So I did miss that, so. We were able to obtain a crack and seal machine, so with all our new streets now, our plan is to, within two years, go ahead and crack seal the streets. So as we see here on, forgot the name of the street, but Race, Race Street? We're, we're gonna need to, to do that pretty soon, and also Christopher. So the guys are gonna be testing out the machine or trying it out. It'll be our first time as a, a city to do crack and seal, so it'll be kinda interesting to see how it goes. So we'll be trying to do that next week. And I think we got a pretty good deal on that. I don't know if you wanna mention.
Yeah, we were able to acquire it through a, a bid process through county. County was auctioning one off, and we were able to acquire it through that bid process from the county. What this does, council, is, is one of the, one of the things that we've struggled with is proper maintenance of our streets, and that results in a higher cost down the road for us. So spending these dollars upfront, no, this was not budgeted, but it is truly a necessary item that I felt we, we absolutely needed to get. So I did authorize the, the acquisition of it. This will allow our guys to go out and now crack fill these new streets that we've just invested all this money into, and allow them to last much longer. If we don't maintain the streets properly, they're only gonna last us about 10 years apiece. If we can maintain them properly, they should, properly, they should last us closer to 30 years before we have to come back and do a reconstruction. So this should make our dollars go a whole lot further if we are properly maintaining our roads. And now they're getting more equipment to help with that, not only a new pothole, I'm sorry, a new asphalt machine, but they've also got the crack fill and reseal machine as well that'll help with that maintenance.
Now, what is crack fill? Is it a solution to go over the black top? To the roadway?
Close. When asphalt, asphalt commonly cracks, and the problem is, is asphalt, Mr. Sandoval could probably tell you a lot about it, right? Aren't you in the asphalt business, too? Yes. No, that's not you? Oh, I thought you were. But essentially asphalt, when it cracks, the problem is, is come winter time, water will collect inside those cracks. And then when we get freezing temperatures, that crack separates, and it deteriorates, and the cracks will go all the way down through the road base. And when that happens, that's when you get the alligator, they call it alligatoring, and you'll get a road failure, and there's no way to fix that. The only way to fix that is to completely tear everything out, all the way down to the base, and completely redo the road. So the purpose of the crack fill is to come in here, when we identify these cracks in the road, and fill them in with this filament, and, and it allows, it protects the road from getting those cracks and furthering, and getting that damage down into the road base, allowing the road to last many, many more years.
Okay. My question is, is what about the fence in Johnson Park around the basketball?
That's an insurance claim that we're working with TML on right now, waiting on them to, to figure out for us. Yeah. So as soon as we get the claim finished, and we see proceeds from that, then we will, we will make the repairs on the fence.
Before we move on, I wanna say that painting the playground equipment at Johnson Park makes it look like a happy park. And this is so much better. I mean, this looks like kids might wanna actually, you know, they might wanna actually come out and play on this. I love these colors. Good job.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Gilbert? Okay, seeing none. Next item is Animal Control or Animal Services.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening. No hands out?
There we go. What's that?
Where's our handout?
What?
It's on, it's on the screen.
Oh, I don't have, no, I put mine up. So I need a handout, okay. All right. Handouts are coming. So we had 70 calls for service this month. Or, this is actually for the, the month of March. We investigated seven bites. We, this was our big thing. We, we took in 91 dogs last month, which the highest we've ever taken in was 67. So we really got hit with a lot of dogs. And you'll see Dakota down there in the corner with a, with a cage full of puppies. So we ended up, we picked up a lot of, a lot of dogs last month, which was an increase from the year before of about 57%. We also picked up 13 cats, which increased about 85%, which we didn't, we usually don't get that many cats, but we got quite a few. Our live release rate was 72% last month. Our adoptions, transfers, rescues, return, return to owners. We had, we were able to get out of those 91. We got 52 of them out that month. We took, we received 1,598 phone calls. And now this was, this is a new, a new thing that we have. Now that Mindy's on board, she is going and starting to do off-site events. And she did four of them in March, and in, during those four events, she was able to get 11 animals adopted out. So our, we're real excited about getting our off-site events, which the, the picture there on the, I guess it'd be the far right, is one of the off-site events that she had done. Any questions, or?
No, thank you.
Do you know the cause for such an increase? Any idea on what the cause was for such an increase?
The, the big increase, I really believe it's just, we, we just got hit with a bunch of pups, moms and puppies. We ended up getting one mom who was a feral dog with her puppies. And then we had, and then we had another one like not even four days later. So we basically had our quarantine overflow. It was a nursery there for a while while we were, we're getting animals out.
Perfect.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, item nine, consideration of possible action. Item A, Resolution Number 2025-04-02, Resolution of the City Council of City of Everman, Texas, approving an updated job description for the position of city manager and providing an effective date. I will entertain a motion.
I have the motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-04-02 as red.
I have the motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash oh four, A two, as read. Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Got anything to?
No, I mean, I, I'll answer any questions if you have any, the, the job description does include responsibilities for both city manager as well as maintaining some EMC responsibilities, as discussed, but that's it.
We'll see, we have no questions or comments, would you poll the council?
Place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three. Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item B, resolution number two zero two five dash oh four dash oh three, a resolution of the City Council of City of Edmond, Texas, approving an updated job description for the position of chief of police and providing an effective date. I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero four dash zero three as read. Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion?
Just to clarify, typically council doesn't have to approve director level job descriptions, but because, A, this is kind of a charter position, but, but B, um, the positions were originally, well, previously won, and we're separating those out, felt it was most appropriate for y'all to approve this one, so. If it feels out of the norm to approve a job description for this level, that's, that's why.
Any questions or comments? Should poll the council?
Place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three. Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item C, resolution number two zero two five dash oh four dash oh four, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Edmond, Texas, authorize the city manager and assistant city manager to serve as interim co-executive directors for the Edmond Community Development Corporation, ECDC, until a final interlocal agreement is approved and executed, providing for an effective date. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve resolution number two zero two five zero four zero four as read.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Got anything? Okay. Would you poll the council?
Place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item is executive session. Item A, Texas Government Code Section 551.074, personnel matters to deliberate the appointment, appointment, employment, evaluation, reas- alignment, reassignment, give my glasses. Uh, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee to wit city manager. So, the time is, uh, six fifty-three, and we're going into executive session. Small it.